I'll now call back to order the regular meeting of the Lake Forest School District 67 Board of Education for October 29th, 2019. May I have a roll call, please, Eileen?
Mrs. Levert?
Here.
Mr. Foulker?
Here.
Mrs. Sands?
Here.
Mr. Borkowski?
Here.
Dr. Lemke?
Here.
Mr. Engeland?
Here.
Mr. Chun?
Here.
We have a quorum, and could we please ask again not to block the doorway?
Yeah, just as the meeting continues, please, the doorway issue is a fire hazard, so we just need to make sure that the doorway is not blocked, please. There is audio in the lobby. I realize people probably want to stand in here.
There's room up front, too, if any.
Thank you for joining us. There is no joy in the school District 67 community today, and certainly there is no joy at Deer Path Middle School. There is no joy among our parents and students, nor among our teachers and staff. There's no joy among the administration, nor among your elected board members. Our collective family is sad, and we all are grieving. Later tonight, this board will act upon the resignation of our longtime staff member, our principal, our leader, and our friend, Tom Cardamone. There are a number of questions which I will attempt to answer tonight, some of which will remain frustrating. I hear you, and I share your frustrations, and I know all of my fellow board members and the administrative team do as well. First question: How can I sit here and say that I am sad when I am about to accept Tom's resignation? Doesn't that make me a hypocrite? My personal feelings for Tom run deep, and I know many of you feel the same way. Tom served as a principal for my two children for three of their four years at DPM. He cared for them just as he cared for me, sincerely, positively, and passionately. Our families sat together at July 4th parade sometimes, with his kids sitting on the curb, literally, next to my children. When I listen to the comments from the parents and staff about how awesome Tom has been, those comments resonate very clearly with me. That has been my own personal experience with him. And I know my fellow board members and senior administrators, including our superintendent, share these feelings. Each of us has our own special memories with Tom Cardamone. He is that type of person. But with that being said, I still not only respect Tom's decision to resign, I agree with that decision while also being profoundly saddened. Do I believe it is the right thing for Tom, for our school, and for our students? Yes, I do believe that with a very heavy heart. Those feelings are in direct opposition to each other, but they are not mutually exclusive. I absolutely support Tom Cardamone, while also understanding and accepting his resignation. I grieve greatly with each of you while doing this. So what did Tom do? And what happened to transparency? How does a board assess a situation like this? Did we make mistakes? And finally, where do we go from here? I'd like to try to answer each of these questions for you honestly and to the best of my ability. What exactly did Tom do? And what about transparency? These questions are at the top of everyone's mind, and they are extremely intertwined. I continue to believe in transparency as much as I did seven years ago when I was first elected, perhaps more so. But I've now also learned things which I did not previously understand. I've learned that the legal rights of the individual employee, as well as students, may conflict with the desire to satisfy other people's quest for information. I've learned that releasing information can violate an employee's rights and their due process. To quote one of our board members whom you will hear later tonight, "We are not hiding behind the law, but rather, we are standing in front of Tom, protecting Tom's privacy at Tom's request." Is there anything new that I can tell you? Yes, I can now quote Tom's own words, which he prepared not only for this board, but also for you. I will read Tom's resignation letter in its entirety later tonight. For now, in an attempt to answer the question of what did Tom do, I will read the relevant portion from his letters in his words. In his letter, Tom states, quote, "During my time as principal, I have always tried my hardest to lead with integrity while following district policies and protocols. Yet I recognize there were certain aspects of my recent administrative responsibilities that I did not fulfill to the district's expectations with respect to information reporting," unquote. I fully understand that for many, that statement will not suffice, as it does not explain what actually happened in any level of detail. But it is what Tom has chosen to share publicly. Tom continues his letter, saying, quote, "I know this is an unexpected announcement, but the best way you can support me is to respect my privacy and continue to support Deer Path Middle School staff as they move forward," unquote. So while transparency remains a core value to me, it comes in direct conflict not only with the law, but also with Tom's own request for privacy. Somehow, these conflicting things must coexist. The result is extreme frustration for you, for me, for the board, and for the administrative As I wrestle with these paradoxes, I find slight comfort in one thing. This board has a stated core value of being student-centric. While we are not perfect, while we were not perfect in this process, and I'll touch on that momentarily, we strive to put students at the core of every major decision that we make. I realize that lacking more information, many people will find that statement incredibly difficult to believe. I understand that frustration and the anger that comes with it, but it is true. What about the process? Were we perfect? No, we were not perfect. I'm not sure if there is such a thing as a perfect process in this type of situation. But I am sure there are things that we could have done better. There are many parts of the process to be examined: communication to staff and parents, how internal protocols affect public appearances, support structures, and more. Some of these conversations have already begun, but I commit to you that this board and administrative team will thoroughly examine all aspects of this process. Ultimately, this board has responsibility for oversight, and we will do our job. While we were not perfect, the communication internally, specifically between Superintendent Simic and the board, and more directly through me as the board president, that communication was correct. The superintendent was fully transparent with me, and by extension, this board. The board has been kept informed of all significant information and all developments throughout the entire process. While anger is a real emotion and a significant stage in the process of grieving, I believe there truly is no us and them in this situation. There are no bad people here, only people doing the best they can under extraordinarily difficult situations and unfortunate circumstances. It helps to have a target at which to direct our anger, but in truth, we all are here for the same reason: because we care about the students. We truly are one team, even if it doesn't feel that way now. While we look back and reflect on the situation, we must also look forward. Moving forward will not be easy. We have already felt a loss without Tom's presence. We all will grieve. We will struggle through this period together as one school district, as one community, as one family. The staff has heard me say this before, and I will say it again now. District 67 has the best teachers and staff that I have ever seen at any school district. The care, concern, professionalism, and expertise that they bring to this classroom is unmatched. I remain both awed and grateful to it. To the staff, I say heartfelt thank you. Thank you for continuing your awesome work for the kids, even in this time of sadness and frustration. To the parents, please know that I read every one of your emails, and I hear your concerns and frustration. I share your passion for our youth, and I also share your sadness. Thank you. We now move to the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Borkowski. Our students, our staff, administrators, parents, and community members are grieving at the absence of Mr. Cardamone. I am as well. As Mr. Borkowski stated in his remarks, we have all our own personal stories with Mr. Cardamone. He was more than my colleague and my collaborator. On a personal note, he was also my daughter's principal. Mr. Cardamone was someone who genuinely cared about everyone, and that has been evidenced in the schools and the community's reaction in his absence. My recommendation to accept his resignation may also seem at odds with those statements. The fact of the matter is that I, too, am profoundly saddened by this turn of events, yet I respect Tom's decision to resign. I would like to thank our staff for continuing to demonstrate professionalism. As our students arrive each day, I continue to be impressed with our staff's ability to somehow work productively with each other, our students, and our parents. I'm also very grateful to the parents who have kept their focus on our students and staff as they provided continuity during this time. Thank you in advance to our parents and community members who have reached out to me over the past few weeks with their thoughts, and thank you to those in attendance tonight. Though it will not be easy, I am confident that we will find a path forward as we heal and move forward together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. We now move to public participation. The Board of Education welcomes public attendance and participation in all of our meetings. In a moment, we will open our first public participation time for those interested in offering comments to the board. We do list a second public participation on our agenda, following our board committee and liaison reports. That time is generally used for comments relating to those reports and new business. Before we open public participation, I'd like to review the standard procedures for public comment. These guidelines are designed to maximize participation for all and allow all interested parties the opportunity to express their thoughts. Interested speakers should come to the podium, and please state their name and address. So that as many people as possible have an opportunity to speak, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. The board clerk will remind you when you are near your time limit. Comments should not be redundant and should be directed to the board. We ask that you refrain from clapping after each comment in order to preserve time for all speakers. Everyone has a right to be heard respectfully. This is the board's opportunity to listen, and while our inclination is often to engage in two-way dialogue, we will not respond to questions at this time. Detailed questions posed to the board will be taken under advisement. If you have any letters or other written material, they should be handed to the board clerk, Eileen Fowler, for the public record. We plan on taking public comment tonight until approximately 8:15. I would now like to open public comment. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the board?
Good evening. My name is Mary Eileen Blondell. I've already timed my comments. They come to approximately 3 minutes and 5 seconds. My comments, nor the response or comments of any other person here tonight, is the issue. Let us keep the focus on the focus, not on the reaction to what is going on here, but the actions, or lack thereof, by the board and our superintendent, which have brought nearly 100 people here tonight. There are many of us here, present company included, and some not in attendance, who have been attacked, vilified, called racist, white supremacist, intolerable, out of touch, troublemakers, elitists, for merely asking questions and wanting answers. This is not about us, but about you. And the board, and the superintendent, and our desire to hear truths from you and not to be told by you when we want answers to difficult questions, to either speak to our lawyers or to be dismissed. We want to speak to you. Isn't that your job, to speak to the people who you serve? Is it any wonder that it takes something like this, the house burning down, before people will actually stand up and speak? If you recall, this is the same dynamic that took place when Holland was brought in as principal, under the radar, without public discourse or vetting. People who simply asked how or why were scorned, marginalized, and attacked. Let's not let this happen again over this issue. Because the main and sole reason we are all here is to get some answers from you, the board, who was elected, not hired, with the exception of Simic, who to date is receiving nearly $300,000 a year salary to serve the community, despite covenants that he promised to meet and to date has not met, namely, completing his PhD. The board was voted in to serve this community and provide transparent, inclusive dialogue, which to date has never happened unless the parents of Lake Forest revolt and demand answers, or worse yet, because of this very lack of transparency, inclusiveness, and open dialogue with which you espouse, some have had to resort to filing FOIA's to get the truth. With the exception of attending these meetings, there is zero opportunity to know or understand what the board is doing and why. Our board president, to date, has no pathway to communicate to the people he serves. There is no newsletter. There are no mass emails, although there was one this week, the rote response he sent to anyone inquiring about the Cardamone issue, which I believe has been his only personal communication to his constituents. This is not transparency. This is not open communication. This is called crisis management communication, and it is not acceptable, and we, as the parents of the students who attend these schools, want and expect more from all of you. My comments are as follows. Are you, the board and fellow attendees, aware of the fact that Lake Forest High School ranks 26th in academic standing behind nearly every neighboring school, including Evanston's Township? Is the board also aware that false statistics claiming that Lake Forest High School graduates attend high-standing academic institutions is a complete falsehood? For the past five years, the College of Lake County has consistently been number one or number two in placement or attendance of Lake Forest High School graduates. In the last five years combined, only 20 students inclusively have been accepted to Ivy League schools. Both DPM and Lake Forest High School are deep into the process of detracting. Where did Quest and Explorer from DPM go? It vanished without a trace. For those parents who are not familiar with detracting, it is for those who...
Thank you very much.
...there are no academic standards. Everyone is equal, and students, regardless of their academic ability, will be treated and taught at the same level.
I'd like to make sure all of the people here...
This is intolerance. It is not transparency. You are here to serve us, and we would like you to communicate and do so going forth, so we don't not have to revolt in order to get answers.
Thank you.
My name is Megan Engelberg. I am a parent of three kids at Deer Path Middle School. I am also the president of the Association of Parents and Teachers at DPM. Over the past 30 days that Tom Cardamone has been on leave, I, as the APT president, have had hundreds of conversations via text, phone, and in-person concern concerning Tom's sudden departure. And through these conversations, I have had the privilege to learn so much more, not only about Tom Cardamone as a principal, but more importantly, about Tom as a person. Tom has worn many hats over the past 23 years in his service to Deer Path Middle School. He has not only been a teacher and a principal, but he has been described, among many other things, as a lifesaver, a supporter, a believer, a thought leader, a counselor, a confidant, an inspiration, a family man, a man of strong character, and a friend. He has been termed kind, fair, good, hardworking, dedicated, loved, respected, and irreplaceable. Mr. Cardamone has been complimented and credited for creating a family-like atmosphere at Deer Path, an atmosphere that prioritizes community and full support of one another. He has been described as an advocate, an advocate for all students regardless of their learning ability, and he has positively impacted thousands and thousands of children over the past 20-plus years. And while I hope that my children would have the privilege to have Mr. Cardamone as an influence in their middle school years, what I want most is for Tom Cardamone to be publicly acknowledged and thanked on behalf of all of his supporters at DPM for opening his heart, teaching with his heart, leading with his heart, and being the heart of Deer Path Middle School for so many years. Tom, your departure is truly District 67's loss, and we thank you for your unwavering dedication to our school for the past 23 years. Thank you.
I live on Longwood Drive, and I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I just want to share that I have two kids who have gone through the public school system here in Lake Forest, and I've had Tom as a principal, and he's a fantastic man. I have a son who's a junior at Northwestern. He was accepted into the Midill School of Journalism, which has a 4% acceptance rate, and now he's double-majoring in economics and minoring in computer science as well. He didn't want to go to Ivy League school because he doesn't think they're as good as Northwestern. And I have a daughter who's going to Williams College, and they don't even like to publish their acceptance rate because it's probably...it's not their gig. That's not how they operate as a school. And I guess I've heard so much noise in the community about Tom resigning, and I respect him as a principal and so forth. And my question is, if he has asked for this to be kept private, why can't we respect that? And there's a lot of things that go on in a person's life that, you know, you might not be ready to share, or, you know, I have some of my own things that I could share about that. But Tom has requested this to be private, and he's been a very good principal, and I respect that, and I respect the board for the decision that they're making. And with that, I'll move on.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Lana Rains, and I'm here to express my support for Tom Cardamone. I won't repeat all the wonderful things that Megan just shared about Tom. I will simply say that I echo every single one of them. A thought that's been expressed over and over throughout this situation is that something just feels wrong about it. I, for one, am extremely concerned with whether Mr. Cardamone was provided with a fair and just process. I do not understand why it was necessary for a school security officer to walk Mr. Cardamone in and out of DPM on September 27th, when the meeting to determine whether or not he would be placed on leave was not until September 30th. I do not understand why Mr. Cardamone had to ask about the purpose of that September 30th meeting and did not receive that information until the day before the meeting itself. I do understand privacy issues, and I respect that, but I do not understand why the administration could not provide a minimal amount of additional information at the outset to quell the terrible rumors that began immediately. We now know that this situation is based on one teacher concern, and I obviously do not have the specifics regarding the concern, but here's what I know. Tom has 23 years of impeccable service to our schools. He is beloved in our community, a man of integrity and character. It is hard for me to believe that he has done something that does not warrant a second chance. If anyone deserves a second chance, it's Tom Cardamone. As an additional matter, there is a growing concern among the parent community about what is happening at our district administrative offices. More specifically, who is making decisions about who to hire and who to terminate, and how are staff members being handled as a part of that process? I question whether certain administrators have the best interests of our teachers and students at heart, or whether they may be more focused on their own professional advancement. These are issues that we, as parents, will be looking into going forward. To the Board of Education, we appreciate you, but we are relying on you now. You are our neighbors. You are our friends. You are our fellow parents. We understand that this is a difficult situation, but we have elected you to represent us, and we implore you to do that now.
Good evening. My name is Jack Hirschfield. I live on Heather Lane. Board members and superintendent, trust, it's built on transparency. Trust is built on organization between parties, but most of all, trust between parties is built on integrity. Mr. Chun? Thanks. There is a severe lack of trust between many of us in the community and you, the board and superintendent, because and solely due to the unfortunate and disorganized ways you have managed the communication debacle associated with Tom Cardamone of your own making. My name is Gattanis Jack Hirschfield, and my wife and I are blessed to have three children in Lake Forest Public Schools. I speak to the idea of trust, as for 13 years, I spent my life as an education reporter, covering education issues in Chicago, Missouri, and finally, Texas for Fox News. As a result of my time as a reporter, I have been fortunate to also work in the field of crisis communication for 15 years, in places like Baghdad, Washington DC, and New York. Throughout my decades of experience in communications, it's clear: success of a school board is based on an unbreakable trust with the community it serves. Unfortunately, you have let that process, associated with this debacle, run you. Knowingly or not, you have naively served your internal policies, procedures, and insecurities instead of what's best for the community you are responsible for serving. Your inability to effectively communicate has led to a month-long crisis that never should have been, and in the process, led to hundreds of families and thousands of people taking time to focus on the crisis, time taken away from focusing on our children, not to mention ruining a good man's reputation and work. The clearest and most obvious sign of this, the email from you, Mr. Simic, on Saturday night, a pure knee-jerk, ridiculous reaction to a FOIA request from a member of the media. Why wasn't the district's legal team ready for this, expecting it right at the outset? Why wasn't this information sent out proactively and contextualized before the FOIA request? Saturday night's email did significantly more harm and led to notably more questions and speculation. Once again, questions and speculation that continue to go unanswered and grow the community's frustration. In 2016, my wonderful wife and I, Michelle, were fortunate to enroll our three children into District 67 schools. Our three native Texas children came to these new environments nervous, unaware of what they were walking into, and generally insecure. Our son, Will, has autism. He learns in his own unique and wonderful ways, and Will loves to learn. Will loved going to Sheridan under Dr. Shin's tutelage and was eager to learn about his future at Deer Path. So as he was preparing to move on from the wonderful world Dr. Shin offered him and the staff offered him at Sheridan, to the unknowns of Deer Path the staff offered him at Sheridan to the unknowns of Deerpath Middle School, it was Tom Cardamone, Ken Smith, and Lauren Baker who stepped up and stepped in to plan how Will would be successful at Deerpath. It was Tom Cardamone who--
Thank you, Mr. Hirschfield, for your comments. If you could please conclude. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Bukowski, it took 10 minutes and 17 seconds. I'm almost done.[616.22][616.22](APPLAUSE). It was Tom Cardamone, it was Tom Cardamone who took time out of his day to walk a while around Deerpath Middle School and patiently answer Will's questions. Now Will cannot wait to go to school. So maybe now you're starting -- Mr. Bukowski, I got one more paragraph. Hang in there.
I'm not concerned. I'm concerned about the other people in this room who may want to--
Nobody--[636.16][636.16](APPLAUSE). We good to go? So maybe now you're starting to get a sense as to why so many of us are reacting the way we are to the way you have treated Tom, your friend, and why accepting his resignation rings so wrong and lacking in integrity. Be leaders. Think creatively. Be outside, think outside the box. Provide more training to Tom if needed.[687.11][687.11](APPLAUSE). If necessary, put him on probation, Mr. Simic. Go back into executive session, you're allowed to do that, and reconsider the decision. And if you're not going to do it for yourselves, then do it for the children we put you in
Hi, I'm going to read fast. My name is Karen Pedersen, and I'm a former Lake Forest resident, a 1983 graduate of Lake Forest High School, and currently a teacher at Deerpath Middle School, where I have served both as a counselor and a home arts teacher for 7th and 8th graders for the past 18 years. I have been an educator for over 30 years. I hold two master's degrees, and I've worked with hundreds of educators, administrators, and teacher leaders throughout my career. I currently live in Deerfield with my husband and four kids. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. Clearly, there are multiple issues going on here tonight, but I would like to speak about the action item of Mr. Simic's recommendation to you, the Board of Education, to accept Tom Cardamone's resignation as principal from District 67. I am asking you, begging you, and imploring you to do what is right and just here. I am asking you to reject this request, giving the teachers, students, and parents of Deerpath Middle School the respect, credit, and voice we deserve and wholeheartedly have earned. I do not want nor to believe that Tom Cardamone needs to resign as principal. I feel that whatever the mistakes, oversights, or wrongdoings that are being associated with Mr. Cardamone, we can all learn and grow from and can be made right. After all, that is how we best learn, and that is what we teach our kids. We tell our students every day that it is okay to make mistakes. If we don't make mistakes, how does growth happen? It is ridiculous to think that I would remove a student from my class for messing up academically, socially, or even morally. It would be tragic and senseless if teachers practiced that. Rather, what we do is put a plan in place to make sure that our students understand what went wrong and help them to navigate their way to growth and success. We practice restorative justice every day at DPM with our students who screw up. I am wondering why Tom Cardamone was not given the same opportunity that we give the little humans in our classes every day and that all teachers are also entitled to. I cannot wrap my mind around why Tom had to be plucked out of our school the way he was just as DPM was getting our groove back. Perhaps the mistakes are bigger, more serious, and have deeper impacts when adults make them. Yes, but the key here is that we are all human beings, and we all make mistakes. We learn and grow from them and become better people, teachers, and administrators. From the amazing support Tom's teachers, staff, parents, past and present, are showing, I'm confident that together we can overcome whatever this is, keep moving forward with Tom at the helm of DPM, and become a more unified, caring, collaborative school district that you believe we are. Looks can be deceiving. Your teachers do not feel cared for, heard, or supported. There is a real fear lurking through the hallways in our schools. However, Tom Cardamone was one of the people that created and contributed to a nurturing and caring, supportive culture at DPM. Tom is pure positivity and optimism. I'm good with that.
I'm Kristin McCain, 1556 Terre Lane. The communication, or lack thereof, surrounding this situation has been terrible. I've done corporate communication like Jack, and when you start replying to articles in real time, you've lost your messaging. Your reactive telling of this story versus your proactive telling has been nothing short of a circus. I support Tom Cardamone, and I am concerned about the future implications of losing such a dynamic leader. Ask ourselves, what reason do equally talented teachers have to stay? Many of them are here tonight to support their leader. I am most concerned, just after speaking with teachers, to learn that three recent hires on the administrative level from the Buffalo Grove Atapaskig Tri-P District are unsupportive of our teachers. I raise the concern with you as the Board of Education to flag future hires from this district so we aren't supporting cronyism. We must uphold our Lake Forest ideals of fostering a working environment with our teachers and being supportive of them. Mike, as president of the board, you say your goal is to always put the students first. Our teachers are the best asset to do this. We have done them wrong by looking for a reason to get rid of Tom, who was our teacher's biggest supporter. As a board, I encourage you not to question the what. I encourage you to ask the how. How did this concern come and be raised? Who stands to benefit from Tom being gone? Please reject this resignation and work through these issues. We demand that.[1042.88][1042.88](APPLAUSE).
Hi, my name is Meg Lynch. I'm here with my husband Colin. We have a 6th grader at Deerpath. And as many of you may have noticed, we are wearing blue tonight, just like our children wore to school today. I'd like to explain why we are wearing blue. The color blue represents unity, trust, loyalty, and truth at Deerpath Middle School. The reason I know this is because I was so impressed and proud to see our teachers wearing blue ribbons during conferences, I asked, what's going on? After learning about what the blue ribbon represents, I've been thinking about these words: unity, trust, loyalty, and truth. What do they mean? I think they express exactly why we are here tonight. We are here as a united force for good, for support, and to show we want our voices to be heard. We are here tonight because, quite honestly, we do not trust that the appropriate actions are being taken. We have researched your bylaws, talked to many parents, community members, and consulted with attorneys. We are here, we are trying to trust the process and your decisions, but I just keep coming back to the same gut feeling. Something has gone wrong here. We are here tonight because we are loyal to Tom and our teachers. Although I would love to go into our, what an outstanding principal and man I believe Tom to be, I think you've heard that point. We are here tonight because we want the truth. I know there are reasons you can't share details, but here is the truth as we know it to be. The truth is that Tom made a mistake. It was not criminal or illegal. The truth is, the way this whole incident has been handled has created a very stressful environment for teachers, parents, and most importantly, the students. The truth is, you, our decision-makers, need to reject Tom's resignation letter and bring our fearless leader and friend, Tom Cardamone, back. By doing so, you will show us that you are united with us, not against us. You will prove that you can be trusted to represent us. We will know you are loyal to our school, teachers, students, parents, community, and Tom. And in the end, the truth will prevail as it always does.[1188.83][1188.83](APPLAUSE).
Hi, Julia Gleat, 875 Melody Road. I have three children in the district, two at DPM, and one that will join next year. I'll be brief. I just, much better speaking in front of children than adults, but I just feel compelled today to speak up. I am sad about the situation that has taken place, but I understand what is done is probably done and what happens next. I know these teachers will take care of my children, no matter what, but you need to take care of these teachers. Take care of them by communicating with them. Take care of them by communicating with them in a timely fashion and in a transparent way. Take care of them so that they will not only feel heard, but that your actions will reflect their voices. Please take care of them so they too feel safe to do their best when they walk into that middle school each and every day. Take care of them so that then they are reassured going forward that your decisions will reflect their needs. Please take care of them by making sure that they are an essential voice as you potentially hire another leader at DPM. Take care of them so that they know that they are valued, not just by your words, but by your actions. Please take care of them.[1275.66][1275.66](APPLAUSE).
Thank you.
So I didn't plan to speak when I came here tonight. I definitely support Tom Cardamone, but I was really here to listen. And what it sounds like to me now is that this is happening, whether we want it or not, and as much as I'd like to see it change, I'm going to choose to accept that. And, you know, I was worried about the kids, but what I recognize being here, what I see here are the teachers who are here. And what I realize is that it wasn't just Tom Cardamone who made this a great school. It was, he was part of the equation, but you're the bigger part, and I think because of you guys, our kids are going to be okay, so.[1331.25][1331.25](APPLAUSE).
Hi, my name is--
Thank you, Ann.
--Donna O'Connor. I raised three children, excuse me, in the school districts here at Everett, Lake Forest High School, and Deerpath Middle School. I even had one at LFI when it existed. And I'm here to speak up for Mr. Cardamone because all three of my children had him, and he was amazing with them, and was a great teacher, was a great coach, was a great mentor, was a great principal. And I see our school districts, and I care so deeply about cratering under this administration. I used to attend school board meetings because I had a vested interest, and I wanted to hold the superintendent, the principals of those schools, to account, and I also wanted to hold the school board to account. I watched Mr. Simic crater some of the best teachers and educators that we have in this system, systematically ridding the high school of several teachers who were nominated for Educator of the Year because they didn't fit with Mr. Simic and his coterie. His communication is terrible. I don't see him, I still go to some school events, I don't see him at many school events, and I hope, I'm going to springboard off something you said, sir, I hope you show leadership tonight and not just rubber stamp what Mr. Simic wants, because Mr. Simic seems to have an agenda to get rid of teachers who have been here for a long time and put in his own crowd. And he doesn't have any real sense or commitment to the community of Lake Forest. And I know for a fact that you don't care about what parents think. And all your empty rhetoric, to me, and this goes to the president of the school board as well, about how much you care about the students, no one cares more about the students than their own parents. So we have all these parents sitting here, and then next is the teachers, and then you guys. You should be supporting that. Instead, you're not, and I'm so disappointed, and you should be ashamed of yourself, Mr.
I'm Heather Clemens, 30 Northwestern Avenue. I have three kids that graduated class of 2019 from Deerpath, and now they're at the high school. First, I want to start by saying to the teachers and staff of 67, it's because of you we have amazing schools that we can be proud of. And to the staff at DPM, I cannot be more impressed by your poise and professionalism during this time. You truly exhibit the crux of Tom Cardamone's leadership at DPM, which is respect, professionalism, and integrity. I'm certain Tom would be very proud. Thank you for continuing to lead by his example. As a resident of Lake Forest, I'm saddened by the events that have occurred over the last month. I was born and raised in Lake Forest. I attended Everett School, Deerpath, and graduated from the high school. It was very important for me to raise my kids here and have them attend the same schools I did growing up. But over the years, the decline in morale, district reputation, and school ranking has become palpable. Peppered with the turnover of principals and vice principals, the lack of communication from our superintendent, and the district's increased abuse of discretion now have become cause of concern. For the past few weeks, I have respectfully honored the Board of Education's request for time to properly investigate the allegations against Tom Cardamone. I can appreciate that for every situation, there's a process and protocol that needs to be followed, and that the Board of Education strives to do their best in each situation. Today, I'm not so sure that the Board of Education has done their due diligence by listening to the teachers, parents, and community, but have instead gone into hiding behind Mr. Simic and Ms. Jenkins' decision to place Tom on a leave of absence. The teachers, parents, and community have reached out looking for support, understanding, and guidance during this crisis, which the Board of Education's answer to these requests come in form of a central office blanket statement citing privacy policies. In the weeks that followed, the silence from the board, superintendent, and assistant superintendent followed for a highly, allowed for a highly respected principal's reputation to be dragged through the dirt. It has gotten out of control, and someone, either the superintendent and the assistant, the Board of Education, or maybe both, need to be held accountable. So, so tonight, I'm curious how the board feels. Mr. Simic handled these communications surrounding Tom Cardamone's incident? Let me be clear, I'm not asking the board to violate privacy laws. I am asking you, though, the board, how it feels our superintendent handled this situation on the 27th, 2019, and each day following. Does the board feel Mr. Simic's communications have been proactive or reactive? Mr. Simic had multiple opportunities to be proactive in his communication, to alleviate rumors, to protect Tom Cardamone's character, support our teachers and staff, and to protect the reputation of DPM and our district, but he chose not to. He hid behind privacy laws and went into radio silence and missing action--
Thank you for your comments. If you could please conclude.
--leaving our teachers and staff unsupervised for days while concerned for the future, while they were concerned for the future of their principal.
Thank you, Heather.
Was the Board of Education aware for every, that it took over a week for someone from the central office to show their face at the school? It was nine days, yet still bound by the same privacy policies, when Mr. Simic made a reactive statement of clarity by debunking some of the rumors that could have been communicated one hour, one day, or one week after Mr. Cardamone was walked out of the school. Please explain how the Board of Education's neglect to recognize how simple communication to the teachers and families was not only necessary, but it was expected in this crisis. Nothing Mr. Simic said nine days after the incident was anything he couldn't have said an hour after it happened. It concerns me how the administration and the board neglects to see the need for communication during this time. I understand with bad decisions come some consequences. If Tom made a bad decision, I respect, and it warranted a consequence of some sort, but I hope, like Mr. Goldman said at that special meeting on October 8th, that it was really, really big. By the way, Mr. Simic treated a highly respected man who has dedicated 20 years to our district. Personally, I can't imagine what Tom could have done that warranted being treated in such horrific disregard. It's embarrassing our administration handled this situation the way it did, and it's even more embarrassing to think an apology is adequate. What I hope to learn over the days and weeks ahead is how the board views Mr. Simic's behavior while handling this incident. I hope the board views this behavior as inexcusable and enforceable by consequences. I hope that the Board of Education receives letters, the letters that they receive from the community, from the community voicing their opinions, they can remain open and receptive, but more importantly, they can put bias aside to effectively represent the majority opinion, which may be to move forward in a vote of no confidence.[1786.41][1786.41](APPLAUSE).
Hello, my name's Kyle Gusty. I live on Telegraph Road, and I was specifically told not to speak and only listen here. not to speak and only listen here. So, yeah, I'm gonna have to say, we, this is home for me. Lake Forest is home. We lived in Nashville for 12 years. We moved back to take care of my mom. I have an 11-year-old and a seven-year-old. And the reason we stayed is because of the schools. I'm gonna get weepy. The schools here are great. Look how disappointed everyone is with you. Look how disappointed. Something happened. You're not excluding things. Rumors are running rampant. My son, who's a fifth grader right now, is telling us things that kids are telling him. I understand privacy is important, but can't we rule things out? Can't we work and listen? I mean, I'm just saying, this is the best school district in the world, as far as I'm concerned, which is why we're staying here. But look how disappointed everyone is. You guys are doing something wrong. You are doing something wrong. Please make it right. I mean, I'm not an advocate of Tom. I mean, he's from Minnesota. We do stuff with the, we do stuff with the Vikings, and I invited him up for some things we're doing up there, and I never heard back from him. I guess now I know why I never heard back from him. But it would just be nice to rule some things out because you guys are letting rumors run rampant. And this is not imaginary right here, okay? So, just if you could please maybe consider what's important to us. This school system is the greatest school system that we can get. If we live back in Nashville, it's two Ferrari payments a month to get what we're getting here for our taxes. So we're very happy to be here. But could we just be a little bit more open and exclude some things? You don't have to say exactly this, that. There are so many rumors out there. I've heard, Ronnie, you've heard horrible rumors. And it's not fair. I mean, if he did kill somebody, let us know. But we should rule some things out so that not, we're not, everyone's not thinking something horrible is happening, okay? That's all I have to say. And again, I was told not to speak, so I've already violated my rule of honor.
Hi, I'm Allison Walsh. I live on Cherokee Road in Lake Forest. And I just want to share that Tom Cardamone is extremely rare. A man, an administrator like him is hard to find. I'm at a loss as to why we would allow him to walk away from the school and our children. I've known his family my entire life. I know him to be a man full of integrity, honesty. He's hardworking, kind, friendly, smart, professional, and truly invested in our children. On behalf of 250 other people, I'd like to read this statement and present the petition. We support Tom Cardamone, and we request the Board of Education reject Cardamone's resignation and reinstate Tom as principal at Deer Path Middle School in Lake Forest, Illinois.
My name is Karina Lissard. I'm one of the co-presidents of the District 67 Lake Forest Education Association, the LFEA. We've made the decision to make a public statement about the proud education professionals who work in all of our district schools. We believe that good schools, or should we say excellent schools, are at the heart of a strong community. As a teacher in elementary schools, in one of the kindergarten's favorite inquiry units, they learn about the four cornerstones of Lake Forest: family, tradition, philanthropy, and of course, education. During one of my second graders' inquiry units, my students interview their parents and neighbors and ask, "What makes an effective community?" And why they did, why did they move to Lake Forest? And they learn about the beauty and the location of Lake Forest is what intrigues families, but it's because of the schools that their families put down their roots and call Lake Forest home. We believe if excellent schools are at the heart of a strong community, then it's excellent teachers and staff who are the heart of our schools. It's passionate and effective educators who take pride in their work and inspire and empower all of their students, your children, to grow and thrive as learners and develop a balanced self, sense of self, steadfast resiliency, and a deep respect for one another as citizens of this ever-changing world. After all, that is what our district's mission and vision. Our District 67 schools are not only excellent, but we believe that everyone thrives under strong and effective leadership and strong and supportive partnership with parents and the community. We wonder if teachers and the staff are the heart of the school, then what happens when their collective hearts are heavy? In the past 32 days, they've been rough for the teachers and staff at Deer Path Middle School. And although hearts were broken by not knowing their trusted leader, where their trusted leader was, and disheartened by the unending rumors and untruths swirling about the classrooms and in the community, and growing more frustrated by the lack of communication, they still got up every day and gave their students 100%. Just as our back-to-school keynote speaker motivated us to give 100% of whatever we had that day, it's still 100%. These Deer Path teachers helped their students by maintaining the normalcy and routines of their day, doing what they do best. They create an environment that maximizes each student's growth, including the willingness to take risks and learn from their mistakes, which is another key core value of our district's mission and vision. We wonder if excellent schools thrive under strong and effective leadership, then how do teachers feel after the mysterious departure of their trusted principal? At your special session on October 8th, it was clear to you, the board, Mr. Simic and Mrs. Jenkins, and all who were present and listened to, and hopefully understood the disappointment, the concerns, and the hurt felt by Deer Path teachers through the public comments made by most of our, by many of our most trusted and admired veteran teachers. It's unfortunate that the meeting was not recorded because more community members and students would have seen and heard the passionate professionals who are the heart of Deer Path.
My name is Laura Armstrong Montgomery. I'm a 34-year employee of District 67 and have worked in every single one of our schools, including the one that does not exist anymore. And I'm the proud other co-president of the teachers and the staff of the LFEA, which includes all certified teachers, nurses, social workers, therapists, psychologists, media center assistants, and teacher assistants. I'm going to continue where Karina left off. We wonder if excellent schools with excellent teachers are at the heart of a strong community, what happens when some of our most promising or even our most experienced staff begin to question their place here or reevaluate their emotionally well work environment? It's no secret that Lake Forest has had its extreme, has its share of extreme highs and extreme lows over the years. Deer, Deer Path has unfortunately experienced a revolving door of administrators, and many have had to endure multiple episodes of heartache. Trust me, like many of my colleagues, we have given our careers to this community, and we've lived through it all, and we are still moving forward. But this time, the departure of Tom Cardamone felt very different. It left many hearts aching, but more than that, it left heads scratching. Others have felt a growing lack of trust and confidence in our district leaders. Some, in fact, are so disheartened by the climate that they've contemplated seeking other employment. We know it's time for healing and moving forward, but we know that trust can't be built in a day. Since the day after your special session, we've appreciated the administration's effort to begin the healing process. Although some of our teachers have voiced that it feels reactive or disingenuous, we truly hope that this is a sincere start, and the plan going forward provides the necessary building and healing blocks. To you, the board, as we work with our administration, we promise that we will let you know how it's going. We believe as members of the LFEA, we want you and the Lake Forest community to know that our teachers' organization is committed to the same key core values in District 67's mission and vision. Quote, "We believe that world-class education is driven by world-class educators, and therefore, we need to attract, develop, retain, and invest in passionate and effective teaching professionals." We believe that the educators and staff at Deer Path, Cherokee, Everett, and Sheridan Schools are some of the most passionate and effective professionals anywhere. We also are committed to the tenants of our collective bargaining agreement that states that, quote, "The collective purpose of the LFEA, the Board of Education, and District 67 administration is the creation and nurturing of an academic community which fosters and promotes professionalism, values and supports its members, encourages academic collegiality, and promotes mutual trust among teachers, administrators, and board members." So as we embark on shaping and negotiating our next contract, we want to uphold the same values, excuse me, I'm like, so dry, because it's ultimately the community's children that benefit from this shared belief. We believe as proud leaders of the LFEA, we recognize that the journey of rebuilding not only hearts, but respect, a positive work environment, and thriving schools may take some time. But please note that throughout this long and emotional four weeks, we have seen the teachers and staff at Deer Path Middle School conduct themselves as utmost professionals, focus on their students, and most of all, be encouraged and lifted by the outpouring of support and appreciation from parents and the community. To you, parents and students, with our full hearts, we thank you. Finally, although we wish the outcome could be different, with full hearts, we want to publicly wish Tom Cardamone the best for himself and his family. Thank you, Tom, for being the heart of Deer Path for 23 years. As PJ Fleck, the coach of Tom's beloved University of Minnesota's football team would say, and Deer Path colleagues, you can help me say the mantra together, "Row the boat, Tom. Row the boat." Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Heather Strong. I live on Mayflower Road. I like, again, I was here on the 8th, and I'd like to say again, I echo all the comments of those that came before me, but I had two points that I have not heard this evening, and I address them to the board in speaking in a language that you have spoken to me many times. I am talking, I would like to view the last month on the platform of social, emotional learning that we have heard many times coming from each of you back to us. And through that, I have heard so many times echoed that we are striving to create an environment where people feel safe, respected, trusting one another, a place of love. And I feel like what's happened in the last month has destroyed what you all, what we all have been working for, for years. That was ruined and kind of, I don't know how long it's gonna take for us to get that back. So that's one point I had. And the second point is in dollars. How much has this cost the district? We, I believe, we already have someone on staff who has PR in their job description. This is a district that hires consultants to tell us how to draw pie graphs about charting our students' community service. We have the money to do this. We strive on excellence. Is this really the best you could have done in public relations? Thank you. I'm sorry, I just wanted to add.
Thank you, Heather. We do have about 15 minutes left to public comment, so any new comments, and if there's any other topics on the agenda, just want to let everyone know that. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Julie Meadows, and I retired from Deer Path Middle School six years ago after 30 years teaching science. I was also, for the last 10 years of my career, the LFEA president slash vice president for those years. I have to say that I went through something with another principal that we all know probably, if you've been here for more than 10 years or so. And I watched as that man, who should have been fired, he actually resigned. But before that, there were two rounds of what I will call his wrongdoing. The first round, the superintendent, which was not Mike Simic at the time, and the board of Ed, met and determined that what he did was bad, so they reprimanded him, they put a letter in his file, and they didn't give him his bonus for that year. For something so vile that they just let it go. I'm not saying we let bad things go, okay? What I heard President Mike say is that Tom did something with communications, that it wasn't forthright or some, okay, he did something wrong. Reprimand him. Don't give him his damn bonus. I would, I would also like to address the comment from one of the first people who came. She was a resident, and she said, "He has asked for privacy. He has resigned. Let's move forward." Okay, I believe, number one, he resigned. I believe, number two, he wrote that little script for you. I would like to know under what duress he had to do that. I have been privy to background conversations in my life as a, as a LFEA president, and some of them were not pretty. I can say things now, not anything private about certain people, but I will say this. I have seen people in situations where if they did not resign, even if they felt that they were not guilty, or I felt that they were not guilty, if they had not resigned, they would never get another job as in, in, in school. I don't know what happened in this respect. I don't know what he did. I just know Tom, and Tom and I didn't always agree philosophically. We went toe-to-toe many times. But I believe that he cared about his school. I don't believe he could have done anything so vile that you need
Thank you.
My name is Joshua Roche. I had the pleasure of working with Tom a long time ago. You hear what they're saying. You're hiding behind privacy laws now. You know what he did. Is it really worth crucifying a great man's character? It's not. You know, you know it's not. You know it's not, okay? Tom, you didn't deserve this. I don't know where the camera is, but we love you, and you didn't deserve this.
I'll be very brief. My name is Jean Hershey. I'm the music teacher at Deer Path, and I have been teaching there for 23 years, the same length of time that Tom has spent in the district. And one thing I know about Tom is that he has very high standards for himself, very high standards. And so this mistake, whatever it is, must be killing him. And therefore, it's killing me as his friend and someone who admires him as a leader. His tendency and my tendency, we've often laughed about, is that when we do make a mistake, we immediately throw ourselves on our swords. Even, and we feel worse about it than maybe it even warranted. And if that's the case, if it's the case that Tom is throwing himself on his sword when it's not necessary for whatever this impression is, I urge you to have him reconsider and reject his resignation and have him reinstated. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Becky Nagel. I live on West Laurel Avenue. To the board, I'd like to remind you of some, of one of your duties. As I looked at the District 67 Board of Education Operations Procedures Code of Conduct on page four of 27 pages, the very first bullet point says, and I quote, "I will represent all school district constituents honestly and equally, and refuse to surrender my responsibilities to special interests or partisan political groups. You have received hundreds, if not thousands, of communications, phone calls, emails, Instagrams, tweets. It is your duty to represent your constituents who are in this room tonight, as well as the hundreds, if not thousands, of communications that you have received in support of Tom, and it is your duty, per the Code of Conduct, that you should decline Tom's resignation and reinstate." and reinstate him.
Hi, my name is Joanna Marshall. I have three children in a district and one that I just sent off to Northwestern. Really quick question. I hear you guys talk a lot about transparency and trust, which I think is completely broken in this community now, one that I was raised in and I went to all of your schools. I'm going to have a quiz right now for the room. How many people in this room know that this district is detracking our children? Raise your hand. Okay. Six, seven. How many of you people in this room know that the high school last week started inclusionary training on their teachers? We are now going to have inclusionary classrooms. How many people know that? Okay. How many people know that there's a plan for $40 million to potentially be raised to put security, security inside every door, modular furniture, updating the furniture, updating the heat in high school? Okay? Because I guess it's, you've got to put textbooks over the heaters and that's a real pain in the butt. And renovating the third floor. $40 million they're looking at. Okay. One. There's your transparency. There's your trust. We need to know more what you're doing, Mr. Simic. We don't trust you.
Anyone else? Ken?
So I wasn't going to speak tonight. I've already talked enough. But Ken Smith, fifth grade teacher. So I don't have much to say, I haven't prepared anything, but this is, as you can tell, horribly upsetting to many people. I'm not a crier, and I cry all the time now, thanks. But I can tell you, the thing about Tom is, like me, he's only ever wanted to be one place. The idea that he would willingly resign is ridiculous. And you said something earlier, Mr. Borkowski, that as you read Tom's statement, where he admitted to not following through to the standards of the board, and then in the next breath, you said that we're not 100% perfect in all of this. So by that definition, why are you all still sitting there? So, so we all admit we make mistakes. Tom admitted he made a mistake. We bring him back. Let him, let him reject, you reject the resignation. Do the right thing, let us get back to work.
Anyone else who would like to make a public comment? We're going to move, Paul, are you coming? Okay.
Hi, Paul Markoff, 1204 South Wilson Drive. This will probably go over like a lead balloon in here, but, sorry. Paul Markoff, 1204 South Wilson Drive, and this will probably go over like a lead balloon. I don't have the faintest idea what the issues are with Mr. Cardamone, whether he did something, whether he didn't do something, whether he's struggling with something. I don't have any idea. And I understand the, that's probably the case with most people unless they're just, you know, better informed than I am. And that may be the frustration, that we don't know. And I'm not sure that people understand the, the difficulty that the board may have with this. I litigate privacy cases. You don't get to overlook the law just because a lot of people want you to disclose something, whether it's inculpatory or whether it's exculpatory. Also, if you want to know who runs the district and how they do it, I would encourage you to come to more meetings. I've been coming to these meetings for years, and I'm often the only member of the public here. Certainly, this is a much bigger crowd than usual. So I come, I challenge policies, I challenge board votes. They don't often like that I do that, probably, but I do it, and I would encourage you to come do the same thing if you want to get involved. So maybe their messaging is lacking. Their educators, board members, admin, they are not corporate communicators, they're not crisis communicators. Sure, that could be improved, but they're restricted by the law. They've got difficulties with it. So, anyway, that's all. One final thing. The DPM lunch lines are too long and sometimes kids don't get to eat, so.
Thank you, Paul. One, one more comment. Go ahead.
Jennifer Harpold, Stone Avenue. Respectfully to Mr. Markoff, as a fellow attorney, this isn't about Mr. Cardamone's privacy. This is about process. And to use a legal term, it just doesn't pass the smell test. And I apologize. It is emotional and we do appreciate everything you're doing, teachers and staff. But I too have come to a lot of board meetings and I see a lot of great debate, but when the vote comes, it's always unanimous. And I would ask each of you to look inside yourselves, look at the board policy and say, "Am I doing the right thing here?" Not doing what somebody is asking you. And that just has to come from within. Thanks.
Thank you. Mike, 15 seconds. We've got one more. We'll do one more. You're good.
And actually, I wish I had something inspiring or eloquent to say, but you guys, I mean, killed it. But I just had two attorneys go, and I'm a recovering attorney, and there was a question that was eating away at me. And I know you can't answer questions, and I understand and respect the process, but I do know that you'll.
The only thing I'm going to ask is use the microphone.
Sorry. I do know that you'll meet and talk about this in the future, so just in alignment with the process. When you made your opening statement, you did say, and I quoted this, and I want to make sure I didn't get this wrong, but that the board was made aware of, quote, "all significant information," end quote. That's what I heard and wrote down. And so I just wanted to ask the question again. I know you can't answer it here, but I know you're going to meet, and then I know this is going to come out in the future. But I just want to understand if the administration shared all, not all significant, but all information with the Board of Education and what those standards are. And maybe they're available and I just didn't know where they were, but I was listening in the back of the room, and that was kind of gnawed at me, and maybe that's my legal training, but I just want to ask that question, so.
Thank you. Thank you. We heard a lot of feedback and input, and on behalf of the board, we thank you very much for our comments. I've had a couple of board members ask me, so we're going to go into recess for five minutes, and then we'll be back. We've got a number of board reports, and we will get to the action item. We're going to take a five-minute break, and then we're going to come back in session. I'd like to call the District 67 Board of Education meeting back to order. Thank you. We have no admin reports tonight. We'll be moving to our board committee reports. Start with our Board of Education Committee, which is chaired by Suzanne Sands.
The Education Committee met on Thursday, October 3rd, at West Campus. We were joined by Jeff McHugh, Rebecca Jenkins, Renee Fitzsimmons, Kate Kavanaugh and Mike Simic. We discussed the Education Committee's charter, which will be an action item later this evening. We discussed some assessment timeline changes with NWEA testing. And for the sake of time, I'm not elaborating in too much detail, but everything is in the report that's available in the board packet. We also discussed the updates that are being made this year to the personalized student profile, and as well as some math curriculum and ELA curriculum updating and work that's going to be taken on and done this year. The assessment report is another topic that we discussed, and we'll be discussing more at our next Education Committee meeting. And we also reviewed the draft of the strategic plan, which was originally scheduled to be presented at this meeting and will now be presented at the November meeting. For those of you who are interested in learning more about that, I encourage you to come. We will next be meeting on November 21st at noon in Seminar B here at West Campus. And as always, the public are invited to attend any of our Education Committee meetings. So that's the Education Committee report.
Thank you, Suzanne. Any questions from the board for Suzanne or the Education Committee? Thank you. We now move on to the Board Finance and Operations Committee chaired by Rob Lemke.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, everyone, for coming out to hear about the Finance and Operations Committee. We, we, we met a couple of weeks ago, and there were five important things we discussed. One, we are reviewing the Food Service Committee contract for this year, and that will roll out sometime. We also will be opening bids on the science labs in DPM very shortly, and that will come to the board, I believe, for a vote, at least we're hoping, in November. Then Jennifer presented the five-year plan and the projections and got the committee up to speed on that. Unfortunately, we're not able to discuss the tax levy as the county did not give us the information we needed. And then lastly, we had a very brief discussion about the fund balance policy, and I believe that will also receive some workshop time probably in November.
Thank you, Rob. Any questions for the Finance and Operations Committee? Move on to the Policy Committee chaired by Jeff Volker.
The Policy Committee has not met since our last board meeting, and we currently do not have anything scheduled. We're awaiting the next press release.
Thanks, Jeff. We move to the Compensation Committee, also chaired by Jeff Volker.
The Compensation Committee met on Thursday, October 3rd, here in the West Campus. We were excited to meet jointly with the newly-formed District 115 Compensation Committee. We welcomed them aboard and discussed our progress to date. We reviewed the committee charter with them. We discussed our proposed project work plan. We gained some agreement on how we will be gathering data in a pilot process, and we worked together with the 115 Committee to set up future meetings. My full recap is posted in the board packet, so I will not go into further detail at this time, but I will let people know, we are meeting again on Monday, November 11th, at 8:00 a.m. here in the West Campus. That's it.
Thank you. Jeff, any questions for the Compensation Committee? We now move on to our Liaison Reports. Our first Liaison Report is the NSSCD. Suzanne Sands.
The NSSCD Leadership Council met on October 2nd. We discussed an incredible variety of things, one of which is the work that is being done on a new financial model for the Northern Suburban Special Ed District. And there are stakeholders from all 18 districts that are involved in various degrees of that process. You can see the report for the other work that we did at that meeting, and I'm happy to answer any questions that people may have. Our next Leadership Council meeting will be November 13th at 7:00 o'clock at the NSSCD.
Thanks, Suzanne. Any questions for Suzanne regarding NSSCD? Next up is our Legislative Liaison, Alice Levert.
The legislative report's attached in the board packet, and overall, it was a quiet October in Springfield and Washington, DC. The focus right now is on the Chicago teacher's strike. However, in preparation for the Illinois Association of School Boards' annual meeting this November, there are new IASBO resolutions that are posted and will be voted on by member districts if they choose to do so. We will actually be voting on some of those this evening.
Thanks, Alice. Any questions for Alice regarding legislative matters? Next is Spirit of 67 Foundation, Rich Johnson.
Okay. The Spirit of 67 Fall Event Stand Up for Spirit was an unequivocal success with a sold-out standing-room-only audience. The numbers are not available at this time, but the Spirit of 67 wanted to thank all who attended and participated in the event, so thank you.
Questions for Rich regarding the Spirit of 67? Next is the Executive APT. Suzanne.
I was unable to attend the last APT Executive Board meeting due to being at Yom Kippur Services with my family, so I do not have anything to report.
Thank you, Suzanne. We now come to our second public participation time. As I mentioned earlier, this time is generally used for comments relating to the board reports and new business. We'll be open for additional public comments until about 8:40. If anyone has a comment, they're welcome to address the board. Seeing none, we move on to our action items. First action item is the acceptance of Tom Cardamone Administrator Resignation Agreement and General Release and authorize Mike Simic to sign on the board's behalf. May I have a motion to accept the Tom Cardamone Administrator Resignation and General Release and authorize Mike Simic to sign on the board's behalf?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
So we now move to additional discussion from board members on the item. I'll start off, as promised earlier, I said I would read Tom's entire resignation letter from start to finish. I'll do that now. After much consideration, I have decided to resign as Principal of Deerpath Middle School, effective December 31st, 2019. During my time as principal, I've always tried my hardest to lead with integrity while following district policies and protocols. Yet I recognize that there were certain aspects of my recent administrative responsibilities that I did not fulfill to the district's expectations with respect to information reporting. To Lake Forest, thank you. You've accepted me and welcomed me. Deerpath Middle School and Lake Forest School District 67 is home. Over the course of these past 22 years, I've become a husband and a father. I've had the privilege of being a teacher, coach and principal to incredible students and their families. I know this is an unexpected announcement, but the best way you can support me is to respect my privacy and continue to support the Deerpath Middle School staff as they move forward. I've grown as a leader and have had the opportunity to work with some of the most caring and talented people that I have ever known. I've made amazing friendships that will last a lifetime. I hope that I have been able to support all of you as much as you have supported me. You are family. In the words of Robert Hunter and the notes of Jerry Garcia, "Fare you well, fare you well. I love you more than words can tell. Listen to the river sing sweet songs to rock my soul. Broke-down palace, grateful dead." Thank you, Tom Cardamone. My fellow board members also have statements to make. Alice, would you like to go first?
I appreciate all the heartfelt comments, stories and outpouring of support shown for Mr. Cardamone. It is important to know that we, the Board of Education, have tried to respect Mr. Cardamone's privacy and follow the law during this process. More than anything, our focus in decisions are always based on what is best for the children, teachers, community, and in this situation, Mr. Cardamone himself. Keeping this in mind and with the facts presented to us from the investigation, I believe accepting Mr. Cardamone's resignation is in the best interest of all. Therefore, I will vote to accept Mr. Cardamone's resignation.
Please. I have known Tom Cardamone since my oldest son entered Deerpath Middle School back in 2009. And I've had the pleasure of working more closely with Tom since my board service began in 2013. Tom is a good man. He is a kind man. He is a caring and compassionate man. He is a man whose dedication to the children under his care cannot be questioned. And like everybody here tonight, I'm very saddened by what has transpired over the past month. I have struggled with how to effectively represent many of the voices that I have heard over the past few weeks with my desire to best support Tom. I want to thank everyone who has reached out to me personally, who has reached out to the board as a whole, who has taken the time to sign the change.org petition, I did read it, and I want to thank those of you who have spoken here tonight. You have all made extremely compelling arguments and have made this decision all that much more difficult. I thought I knew what I was going to do here this evening, and I'll be honest, I'm still struggling. That being said, Tom has submitted his resignation as Principal of Deerpath Middle School. And knowing Tom as I do, and as others have reinforced here this evening, I have no doubt that he reached this decision after thoughtful consideration and much personal reflection. I'm trying to represent Tom, to be quite honest. I have no doubt, I, you may not, I have no doubt, that Tom has done what he believes is best for himself, for his family, for his friends and for his future. I'm trying to be compassionate, supportive of Tom, based on what Tom has submitted to the board. Based on what Tom has submitted to the Board. With that in mind, I understand you do. I understand I do. I understand. I understand that I represent everyone here. As I said, I am trying to take into consideration all of the very compelling arguments. Thank you. I'm not saying what I'm doing. I don't believe that I am personally in a position of questioning motives or decision-making, although I am still not quite sure the best way to honor his wishes. On a personal note, I would like to thank Mike Burkowski for his leadership during this difficult time. The amount of time, energy, and thoughtfulness he has put into responding to emails, that he has done in terms of pushing back on administrators, on our legal folks, goes unnoticed and certainly unappreciated. But Mike, I want to let you know I'm proud to have you as my Board President, and thank you so much for all your help and support.
Thank you Jeff. Suzanne?
Tonight, I just wanted to share a few thoughts as well as some gratitude and appreciation. First, I want to share that this is my seventh year as a DPM parent, and during that time, Tom Cardamone has been a fixture in the school. He has had an overwhelmingly positive impact during his tenure as Principal. He has always greeted people with a smile and treated everyone with kindness and compassion. For that, I will always be grateful to him. Unfortunately, tonight, we are faced with accepting his resignation. Like many of you, I am saddened and deeply disappointed by this turn of events. Out of respect for Mr. Cardamone, the details of the situation that led to this conclusion are likely to remain known only to very few people. I am one of those people. And unlike many who have reached out in recent days, I am not disappointed with Mr. Simick or Mrs. Jenkins. I continue to be impressed with their professionalism, their dedication to our students, and most of all, their integrity. I serve on a team of seven Board members, who as elected volunteers are all deeply engaged and invested in serving this community with integrity. We spend hours upon hours each month dedicating ourselves to making sure that our district is putting students first and moving toward the mission and vision established in collaboration with our community. For the past five years, I have also worked closely with an administrative team that is dedicated to our students, our schools, and our community. They do their jobs with the utmost dedication and integrity. I have watched them navigate numerous challenging and difficult situations over the years, and they have always been driven by what is best for our students and our schools. In many situations involving students and staff, the details behind decisions that are made must remain undisclosed. Time and again, this has created a cry for transparency in our community. Most of what we do in a school district is done out in the open, with the public having access to everyone, everything, while very few usually take advantage of that access. However, that is simply not always the case, and being someone with the inside scoop, I can tell you that there are very good reasons for why that is the case. In listening to myriad voices within our community over the past few weeks and observing various responses to these events, I am simultaneously grateful, deeply disappointed, and also hopeful. I am grateful to our community for the opportunity to serve on this Board even during difficult times. I appreciate all of the people that have reached out in supportive ways with concern about Mr. Cardamone, concern about DPM, and an understanding that our team was doing tough work. I am grateful to all the people who shared their input, experience, opinions, and points of view in respectful and productive ways this evening through email, through the petition, through our last meeting, and in conversations. I am grateful to those who trust that we are all doing our best. I am extremely grateful for the teachers, staff, and administrators at DPM. I am grateful for our team of administrators at West Campus led by our Superintendent Mike Simick. I am disappointed by those in our community and the media who have assisted in spreading rumors based on assumptions that have been potentially harmful, who believe that with no information or details, they are in a better position to make a judgment than those of us with the information and details, and those who have been quick to take sides or assume ill intent on the part of others in a situation that has only been made worse by such reactions. I understand that it is frustrating not to be able to have access to all the details and facts at play. I also understand that it is very difficult to accept that someone you know who has been a positive force in your community and your life may have done something disappointing or something that can't be undone. I would simply ask you to consider why any one involved would choose this situation for our community. This situation has been a challenging personnel matter that was being handled with as much discretion as was possible, out of respect for those involved, and it is the reactions, responses, and actions taken by some in our community without access to all the facts that have turned it into a spectacle. It did not have to play out this way. Finally, we listened, and it is our turn to speak. This is our meeting, and we are the ones who get to speak.
Please be respectful.
Finally...
Please be respectful.
Listening, I have listened for days, and listening and doing what I am told are two different things. No one has told me what to say here. I have prepared this based on the conversations, based on the emails, and based on what I have seen, and I will finish what I have to say.
Please be respectful. Folks, all I'm asking is that we be respectful, please. Everyone had a chance to speak. Please return the respect. That's all I'm asking right now.
Finally, I am hopeful, because during this challenging time, filled with uncertainty, our teachers, administrators, and students have carried on with the business at hand, which is educating without boundaries and learning without limits for the youth of our community. A lot of great work has been done at Deerpath in recent years, and lots of great work is planned for the year ahead. I am hopeful that even with a conclusion that is difficult to accept and one most hoped wouldn't be realized, our teachers, staff, and administrators will continue the work at hand. I am hopeful that we as a community can put the needs of our young people ahead of our grief, confusion, and frustration and disappointment over this loss and focus on what's ahead. I am hopeful that together we can support the DPM staff and students as they move forward. Even on the most difficult days, serving this community and overseeing the education of our children in a district that is doing so many great things is an honor and a privilege. For that, I am grateful.
Thank you Suzanne. Rich?
Thank you, everyone. It's great to see so many faces here today, especially people I know. I speak as an individual member, not the rest of the members of the District 67 Board of Education. I speak for myself. I see many parents, teachers, students here to support Tom. I want to thank you for attending this meeting. It's with heavy hearts that we gather here regarding the principle of the Deerpath Middle School. It's not just your heavy hearts, but my own. I wish this did not happen. I wish the community was not shedding tears. I wish the teachers were not shedding tears. I wish we were here discussing something positive, like the excitement we feel for the plans for the new science labs. Before I was elected to the Board, this Board and Administration team consolidated the middle school and chose this leader to be Tom. He was the clear choice for the job. As a parent, I owe Tom and the teachers a great deal for their excellence in teaching, kindness, and love. They helped my children achieve success in whatever form that takes. From the onset, there were three sentiments conveyed to me. This was before I knew the facts. I pray that Tom is not ill. I hope Tom did nothing wrong, but whatever happened, it destroys my faith in humanity because he helped me through so much. I personally fell into the third category. Tom helped my wife and me guide our oldest child from a new school to the rigors of DPM accelerated classes. He was there for our younger son with all his individual education planning and his accommodations. I could reach out to Tom at any time of day or night, and he would always get back to me immediately. And this was before I was elected to the Board. And it seems you all have the same experience. I want the staff and parents to know about an experience my family had with Tom and how I feel about our amazing staff. I share with you a snippet of Tom as I see him. As a few of you may know, over a year ago, my family suffered a tragedy. It was a devastating period. We kept our kids out of school for a while, and when they were ready, I drove them to school. When I pulled up to Deerpath in front of the school, there was Tom waiting at the door. How did he know we were coming that morning? Did he wait for us every day until we appeared? That would be Tom, indeed. My son got out of the car, and I told Tom to give me a second to park the car. He turned to me and said, "Mr. Chun, I got this." I said, "Tom, are you sure?" He turned to my son, who gave Tom a nod, and Tom said, "Yes, we got this." My children's wonderful teachers are here tonight. They selflessly encourage, cheer, and parent my children to achieve success. They help them through our family tragedy as if my children were their children. I hear all of you, and I respect all of you. You mean a great deal to me and my family, and all the staff mean a great deal to this Board. This experience has shown me that communication with parents and staff is still a problem that the Board will address for the better, I promise. The community and parents have waited patiently for a decision. The Board does not lead the investigation. In fact, the Board does not and cannot investigate. We also have been waiting patiently, as you have. The Illinois Association of School Boards mandates that we govern 30,000 feet and must not involve ourselves in the work of the administrative staff. We cannot interfere in the administration of the schools. This is a collective process between the administration and our wonderful teachers. The Board cannot discuss or act on an item until presented by the Board. We have not been presented anything formal until tonight. We know that a resignation is forthcoming. This is a very emotional time for all of us. We are all heartbroken. I have heard many people send me emails to reject the resignation. They feel that the rejection of the resignation will lead to reinstatement. That option has not been presented to the Board at all. We can only act upon what is presented to us. Rejection of the resignation of Tom Cardamore does not lead to reinstatement. I've inquired about that. I pressed them about it. They have told me unequivocally it does not lead to reinstatement. I cannot and we cannot interfere with the administration duties. Please understand that the Board's final decision...
Thank you.
Please understand that the Board's final decision is not made lightly, and we must respect Tom's decision to move forward on his journey. I owe him this much. This Board is members of the community. We are members of a community that may have differing values and principles, but we never lose the core ideal that we collectively fight for the strength to protect our community and our children. This Board does not hide behind privacy laws. We stand in front of Tom to protect his privacy. And in the end, it was Tom who said to the Board, "I got this," and put an end to our heartbreak. I wish Tom Cardamore all the best in his next endeavor, as he keeps truckin' like the Duda Man. Tom loved his lyrics in his news letter. Thank you for my time.
Thank you Rich. Rob?
Thanks Mike. I'd first like to thank all the teachers at DPM who I know are giving us their best. I'm married to a public school teacher, and it's the hardest job I can think of. I happen to be a teacher at the collegiate level, and it doesn't compare to what you guys do as a public school teacher. I'd also like to thank Mike Burkowski for the countless hours he has put into this and for his thoughtfulness at every step of the way. I would not be on this Board if Mike was not on this Board. So that all said, I have 100% confidence in the results of the investigation as to what events transpired and that they warrant we take this action. However, like many of my fellow Board members, I look forward to doing the Board's work vis-à-vis helping the district and community move forward and evaluating and discussing particulars that occurred along the way. Although none of us want to be voting on this issue, I am confident voting to accept the resignation is the correct decision. Thanks Mike.
Thank you Rob. Justin?
Thanks Mike. I want to share some of my thoughts and some of my experiences as a Board Member and my thought process regarding the events over the last several weeks. I'm a relatively new Board Member, so I was elected in April along with Rich. We joined the Board in May. I've got two kids in the district. I've got a boy at DPM. He's had phenomenal teachers. Many of his teachers are here tonight. My girl is at Everett. She also has had phenomenal teachers. That's why I ran. I ran because I care deeply about our schools and our community, like everybody in this room. Over the last several weeks, I've spoken with many parents. Universally, people are expressing their support for Tom, and I understand why. I've experienced it myself. I've heard from many, many teachers that have the highest respect for him and value and appreciate the culture that he's created at DPM. I've heard from both parents and teachers extremely frustrated about the lack of information that's been available. I've also spent many, many hours with my fellow Board members, the Administration, the attorneys for the district. We've listened to the information that's related to Tom's leave of absence. We've dug deep into the details. We've asked tons of questions, and we've pushed hard. I want to share a couple of the conclusions that I've made over the last few weeks. First, these restrictions regarding sharing information are real. For context, the Board requested guidance from the district's legal counsel about what can and can't be shared. Our intent is to share as much information as possible. The advice was very clear and very restrictive. I understand why this is frustrating for everyone, but I also understand that these laws are in place for a good reason. If the roles were reversed for any of us, I think most of us would want personnel matters with our employer to be kept confidential. The second conclusion I've come to is that even with these restrictions, the Administration should have communicated much more effectively with the community, especially the teachers and the staff. While adhering to state laws and district policy is a requirement for the Superintendent and the Administration, there are many critical stakeholders that have been left out of the communication or have only been communicated to reactively. This is an area that requires significant improvement and is one that I will certainly prioritize. But lastly and most importantly, I believe that the Administration has managed the events related to Tom's leave and resignation with the intent of what's best for students and the district. This has been an extremely difficult situation for everyone involved over the last several weeks. As a parent, I can say that the actions the Administration has taken have been focused on what's best for our kids' learning and safety. As a Board Member and as a parent, I want an Administration that prioritizes those goals, even when it's difficult or unpopular to do so. I'm only one member of the Board, but I do believe that it is in the best interest of our students and our community to accept Tom's resignation. I realize that many parents and teachers here tonight do not agree with that. I know and appreciate that your views are coming from a place of love and wanting what's best for our students and community. I hope that you recognize that's where my decision and my views are coming from as well. My hope is that following tonight... My hope is that following tonight, we'll be able to come together again as a community and collectively work towards that shared goal for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you to my fellow board members for your thoughtful comments, and thank you again to the public for all of you who came and all of you who made comments. As I shared my thoughts with everyone earlier tonight, I will not repeat myself, other than to say that it is with a heavy heart that I also fully support the administration's recommendation. Eileen, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Mr. Falker?
I'm struggling with what my heart wants to vote and what my head wants to vote. I think at this stage of the game, based on Tom's decision and this district needing to move forward, I vote aye.
Mr. Berkowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Levert?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone who took the time to come tonight. We do have a number of additional business items on the agenda. You are more than welcome to stay, but I realize the hour is late, and many have school and work tomorrow. Next on our agenda is the approval of the 2019 through 2021 Education Committee Charter. We have a motion to approve the 2019 through 2021 Education Committee Charter.
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions regarding the Education Committee Charter?
That might be locked.
Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, please, Eileen?
Mr. Berkowski?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Mr. Falker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, may I have a motion to approve the 2019 through 2021 Finance and Operations Committee Charter?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions regarding the Finance and Operations Committee Charter? Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, please, Eileen?
Mr. Falker?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Berkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to reject the IASB recommendation to adopt the Resolution on Student Safety at the IASB Delegate Assembly?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion? Roll call vote, please, Eileen?
Mr. Berkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Falker?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, may I have a motion to reject the IASB recommendation to adopt Resolution on School Safety Grant Program at the IASB Delegate Assembly?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion? Roll call vote, please, Eileen?
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Falker?
Aye.
Mr. Berkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, may I have a motion to reject the IASB recommendation to adopt Resolution on School District Police Force at the IASB Delegate Assembly?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion? Roll call vote, please, Eileen?
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Mr. Berkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Mr. Falker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, may I have a motion to approve the Reading and Writing Project Network contract in the amount of $42,400?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion?
Am I reading the contract right, and that we're being charged close to $400 an hour for this?
Jen, are you able to comment on that? Sorry. Who? Jeff McHugh? Thank you. So we've got a motion to approve the Reading and Writing Project Network contract in the amount of $42,400, and Jeff Falker had a question.
In reading through the contract, we're being billed $3,100 a day? I'm just curious, assuming it's an eight-hour workday, that's $400 an hour? That seems pretty extravagant.
Yeah. What's included in that is not just the professional development, but also we're a partner school with the Reading and Writing Project, that we have access to their resources, teacher resources on that as well, so it's not solely professional development. But it's not cheap.
So is that baked into the hourly rate, then, that membership, or are we paying a separate fee to be a part of that?
That amount is to be a partner school with the project, which includes 15 days of professional development. So it's not solely the professional development.
It's a combination of membership or engagement, as well as an hourly rate for the individual to come to our school.
Correct.
Any other comments or questions regarding this action item? Roll call vote, please, Eileen?
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Berkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Falker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the human resources items as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion? Roll call vote, please, Eileen?
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Berkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Falker?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We now come to our consent agenda. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. I'll first read all of the items on the consent agenda. If there's anyone you want removed, stop me as I'm reading them. Approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements, September 2019. Approval of IASB recommendation to adopt resolutions on business enterprises minority-owned at IASB Delegate Assembly. Approval of IASB recommendations to adopt resolution on background checks, substitute teachers at IASB Delegate Assembly. Approval of IASB recommendation to adopt resolution on school safety, traffic zones at IASB Delegate Assembly.
Please pull that out.
Thank you. Traffic zone item will be voted on separately. Approval of IASB recommendation to adopt resolution on school board elections, seating of new members at IASB Delegate Assembly. Approval of IASB recommendation to reject resolution on school board elections, swearing-in at IASB Delegate Assembly. Approval of IASB recommendation to adopt resolution on school board elections, terms at IASB Delegate Assembly. Approval of IASB recommendation to reject resolution on school board member compensation at IASB Delegate Assembly. Approval of IASB recommendation to adopt resolution on charter school, renewal of charters at IASB Delegate Assembly. Approval of IASB recommendation to adopt resolution on charter school at-risk students at IASB Delegate Assembly. Approval of IASB recommendation to adopt resolution on Position Statement 5.05, Prevailing Wage Act, at IASB Delegate Assembly. Approval of IASB recommendation to adopt Position Statement 1.01, Educational Programs at IASB Delegate Assembly. Approval of IASB recommendation to adopt Position Statement 2.27, State Authorization Charter School Funding, at IASB Delegate Assembly. Approval of IASB recommendation to adopt Position Statement 2.04, Funding Special Education Programs, at IASB Delegate Assembly. Approval of IASB recommendation to adopt Position Statement 2.04, Funding Special Education Programs, at IASB Delegate Assembly. Approval of IASB recommendation to adopt Position Statement 1.08, Standardized Test Procedures, and 1.09, Student Assessment, at IASB Delegate Assembly. Minutes of a regular meeting and workshop, September 24, 2019. Minutes of an executive session, September 24, 2019. Minutes of a budget hearing, September 24, 2019. Minutes of a special board meeting, October 8, 2019. Minutes of an executive session, October 8, 2019. We had one request to remove one item. Are there any other requests to remove any other item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the one item that's been pulled?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion on the consent agenda? Roll call vote, please, Eileen?
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Mr. Falker?
Aye.
Mr. Berkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We now have one last action item that was removed from the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve... Start over. The item is the approval of the IASB recommendation to adopt resolution on school safety, traffic zones, at the IASB Delegate Assembly. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion?
After reading the recommendation and the resolution, I believe it's unnecessary and puts an undue burden potentially on districts as well as municipalities to engage and enact traffic safety recommendations that just aren't necessary in our school district. So I would vote to not approve, or approve to adopt the resolution.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, so we're going to take a roll call vote, and to be clear, you're voting to whether or not to approve the recommendation regarding the traffic zones.
So are you voting to reject it?
Right. I think we need to...
Do you want to make a counter?
I'd like to make a counter, because I think that was our intent, actually, in pulling it, I believe, and if I'm wrong, correct me. But I believe, but I think in order for us to give Alice marching orders as a delegate, rather than voting no on the current...
So you want to make a counter motion to reject the IASB?
So what we were... Right. Well, no. What we were, what the original motion was to the approval of the recommendation to adopt the resolution on school safety and traffic zones. If what we would like to do is, in fact, reject that resolution, instead of not approving adopting it, I believe we have to actively approve rejecting it. So I believe that I would like to make a counter motion...
Fantastic.
That we approve the IASB recommendation, that we reject the IASB recommendation to adopt the resolution on school safety, traffic zones, at IASB Delegate Assembly.
Thank you. So we have a motion to reject the IASB recommendation to adopt the resolution on school safety, traffic zones, at the IASB Delegate Assembly. Do we have a second? Rob Lemke has seconded it. Comments or discussion on the counter motion to reject this IASB resolution?
So I think it's important to explain that the resolution talks about having 20-mile-an-hour school zones on non-school days. So it's not during school hours. It's 24/7, and speed bumps, and other items like that, not taking away anything that's already in place.
Thank you, Alice. Any other comments or discussion on this? So, Eileen, we're going to take a roll call, please, on the counter motion to reject the IASB recommendation regarding the traffic zones.
Mr. Berkowski?
I vote aye to reject this item.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Chun?
Aye to reject.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Falker?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Motion carries to reject.
Thank you. We now move to FOIA requests. We've had four sent to our last meeting. Lake Forest Leader, status complete. Patch, status complete. Tribune, status complete. Jennifer Newbauer, status complete. Announcements, Friday, November 8, 2019, is an institute day, no student attendance. Tuesday, November 19, 2019, will be our next Board of Education meeting, 7:00 p.m. here in the West Campus Boardroom. May I have a motion to adjourn the Lake Forest School District 67 Board meeting?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.